Last minutes long.
I'm telling you.
Going to call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for the gift of community and for the bonds that unite us in our small town. Help us to remember that we are stronger together, supporting one another through difficult times. Grant wisdom to our leaders and compassion to all who serve our community. As we prepare for success and face our challenges, may we never lose sight of your presence among us. Strengthen our resolve to build a future filled with hope and promise for generations to come. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome this evening. Thank you for being here. At this time, we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing that there are none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items one through five on the agenda. Any questions from council? Seeing there are no questions from council, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedule, we've got a, our next city council meeting will be on August 27, 2024. The September the third, 2024 city council meeting has been canceled. Board of Adjustment meeting will be on September the fifth, 2024. I'm sorry, that has been canceled as well. We have our planning and zoning meeting will be on September the ninth, 2024. Our city council meeting from September 17, 2024 will be moved to September the 10th, 2024. And moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number six, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-43 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.18 acres of real property located at 1548 East Hamilton Street from a split zoning classification of multifamily residential R3, local commercial C1, and general commercial C2, to a single zoning classification of local commercial C1.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussion before we move on to final passage? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-43, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-46 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those opposed? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 25 acres of real property located at the 1100 block of North Main Avenue from agricultural AG to medium-density single-family residential R1M.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Mr. Tabor here this evening.
Good evening, Chris Tabor, principal planner. The applicant is requesting a rezone of a vacant 25-acre parcel from agricultural to medium-density single-family residential or R1M. This property was the subject of a previous rezone in April where the request was to go to R1H along with the adjacent parcel. In this case, they're just asking to go to R1M and which matches the adjacent parcel. The public hearing for the item was held on August 8 and saw no participation from residents. Staff did not receive any calls or visits from members of the public regarding this rezone. The subject property is adjacent to the following zoning districts: Green County Zoned Agriculture to the north, Medium Density Single Family Residential R1M to the east, Medium Density Single Family Residential and High Density Single Family Residential to the south, and Green County Zoned Agricultural to the west. The requested zoning district is consistent with the, with the use of adjacent properties. Both the water and sewer systems are in proximity and have capacity to serve this site. A traffic impact study was previously conducted for this application and warranted no traffic improvements. There are no areas of the floodplain present on this property. There is no identified sinkhole on this property. However, there is a sinkhole that this property is in proximity to, which means it's within the city's 30-foot buffer. So, any portion of this development that would be building would be required to respect the city's sinkhole and karst ordinances, which does not allow for construction within that 30-foot setback. So additionally, the sink, the sinkhole and any related 30-foot setback has to be restricted to common lots and can't be on any of the homeowner's lots. The proposed rezone is consistent with the city's adopted plans, and staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from council? No questions from council, and we don't have any citizens' comments this evening. So, this is a first read. Please get with staff if you have any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-47 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 0.46 acres of real property located at 907 North Walnut Avenue from Light Industrial M1 to multifamily residential R3.
Thank you, Laura. We have Mr. Ruiz here this evening.
Good evening, Patrick Ruiz, associate planner. Prior to going over like the details of the staff report, I wanted to point out that this area may look familiar to you. Back in June, the properties to the northeast were rezoned due to their non-conforming status prior to the rezone. So, this particular rezone has a similar situation going on. So, the applicant Dogwood Real Estate Holdings LLC has applied to rezone 907 North Walnut Avenue from M1 Light Industrial to R3 Multifamily Residential. As you can see on the map, both properties on each side of Walnut Avenue have the same address. So, this application is only for the property comprised of lots 20 and 21 of the Cohix North Side First Edition west of Walnut Avenue. The property is currently the site of a fourplex residential dwelling structure. The existing use is currently non-conforming and is not permissible within the M1 Light Industrial zoning designation. Rezoning to R3 multifamily would better preserve the existing use of the fourplex and would be an appropriate reactive measure. Rezoning to R3 multifamily residential would be compatible with the surrounding area as the land uses directly to the west and north and across North Street to the south are commercial. In addition, the land use of the property across Walnut Avenue is also multifamily residential. The site is currently being served and has access to water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure. Existing infrastructure has the capacity to serve the proposed rezone change. Based on this information, city staff recommends approval of this application.
Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing there are none. Remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please remember to get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-48 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 24.32 acres of real property located at 1 Convoy Drive from General Commercial C2 to Heavy Industrial M2.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Mr. Tabor here this evening.
Good evening again. The applicant, Convoy at Hope, is planning to consolidate their site into one lot to accommodate their greater master planning effort, and to do so, they would like to rezone the 24-acre lot you see before you from General Commercial C2 to Heavy Manufacturing M2 in order to match the rest of their site. If approved, they would then follow up with an administrative lot combination, turning that all into one piece of property so that they could, that would, that would allow them to do things such as build across property lines, make projects much simpler and possible. The subject property is adjacent to the following zoning districts: Green County Zoned Agriculture to the north across West Farm Road 144, Heavy Industrial M2 to the east, General Commercial C2 zoning to the south and west. Water and sewer services are already provided to the greater site and have capacity to serve this as well. There are no areas of floodplain present on the property. The site does not contain any identified sinkholes. The proposed rezone is consistent with the city's, of Republic adopted plans, and the city staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing that there are none, this is a first read, so please get with staff if you have any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 10, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-49 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council establishing the procedure for disclosing potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Ms. McCollough here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that we revisit every two years. Under state law, the city is required to adopt an ordinance setting forth the city's policies and procedures for disclosing personal financial interests or potential conflicts of interest. We have done this in this same format with very, very little changes and no substantive changes since 2020. It was most recently enacted two years ago in 2022, and for this renewal year, we're proposing to have the same policy reenacted by way of ordinance.
Thank you, Megan. Do we have any questions from council? No questions from council, and as this is a first read, please remember to get with staff before the next meeting if you have any additional questions. Moving on to item number 11, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-50 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council setting the 2024 property tax levies for the city of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Mr. Ford here this evening.
Good evening. Bob Ford, finance director. Here we are again, talking about tax levies. Hard to believe it's been a year, but just as a reminder, let me remind you, we levy taxes in the city of Republic for three separate funds, for the general fund, for the parks fund, and for the streets fund. As part of this process that we go through to identify what the new rates will be, remember that the, the state statute allows us to capture inflationary growth, but it's limited to the excess growth, assessed growth exclusive of new construction and improvements within that environment. And the permitted growth rate is the smaller of the actual growth rate year-over-year, or the CPI, or 5%, whichever is smaller. Additionally, the city can tax new construction and improvements, but we don't figure those new, that new construction and improvements in the rate calculation. So, we calculate the rate, and then we can apply that rate against new construction and improvements in order to calculate what the new revenue stream will look like. So, some of you are going to remember this from last year. So, I remember Mr. Mayor enjoyed this analysis. We will go through it again, but there's a number of things that we need to do in order to set the new rate structure. And remember, there are a couple of things we're trying to do. We're trying to, one, identify the max revenue that's allowed as per the new rate structure, and then what the implied rate is. We're going to back into that number in order to calculate the new rates for the, for the year. Because we do this for three separate funds, I'm just going to illustrate this using the general operating example, but the first thing, this information comes to us from the local county assessors. So, we calculated adjusted assessed value for the current year. So, why would we do that? So, we start with the assessed value, and then we back out the assessed value of the new construction and improvements, and we back out the assessed value for the newly acquired territory to get to an adjusted assessed value for this current year. And the reason why we do that is we're trying to look at those properties that were in place last year and look at the growth in that basket of properties compared to the assessed value of those basket of properties this year. So, that's why we adjust for new construction and improvements. So, the next thing we would do, so once again, in this situation, we started with $351,000 or $351 million of assessed value. We backed out $25 million in assessed value for new construction and improvement, $71,000 for newly acquired territories, to get to an adjusted assessed value for the current year of $326,093, $312. So, at that point in time, we know what the assessed value on adjusted basis is for this year's assessed value, and now we're going to compare that to what the assessed value was last year. So, the last year, the assessed value was almost identical, $326,173, $312. So, now we're comparing the same basket of housing or the same basket of assessed properties, what the value was last year and what the value is this year for those same basket of properties. And so, really, the year-over-year net increase here is negligible. It's basically 0%. Slightly less, it's, we're about $80,000 down in assessed value this year for that basket of properties compared to last year. So, now we have calculated the rate of growth in the actual properties, and we'll take that assessed value from the prior year of $326,173, $312, and we use the old rate from last year, calculate what the approved or the max revenue that's allowed to be achieved in this year. So, we take last year's assessed value times last year's rate, we calculate what the approved max revenue that's allowed. So, we've got $1,391,782. So, that is a number that we can put and say, okay, this is what we're going to, we're going to use this number and compare it to the assessed value this year and come up with what, in fact, the implied rate structure is going to be. But before we do that, we have to say, is there any permitted growth that we can calculate into the rate structure? So, we've already done, we've done one thing already. We've calculated that effectively we had no growth year-over-year. So, that number is zero. The state auditor provides us with a CPI calculation. It's 3.4%. And we know from the Hancock Amendment that the max ceiling is 5%. So, we had to pick the lowest number of those three. So, it's zero. We can, so in this environment, for this year, the calculated and permitted growth rate on top of what the revenue stream that we can use off of last year's assessed value basically is zero. So, now we take all of that information and we put it in, into the stew and we stir it up. So, at this point, we've got, we've got, we've calculated the total revenue permitted in the last year. That was $1,391,782. We know that the additional revenue that's permitted is zero because the growth rate is zero, and it's the smaller of those three factors. So, now we know what the revenue is for this specific fund and this specific rate. So, we can take that, we can take that revenue stream, we can compare it to the total adjusted assessed value this year, and back into what the rate can be for the upcoming year. You would expect the rate would be the same because we had no growth, and because we had a slight variation in the modified or adjusted assessed value when compared to the assessed value last year, because we had that $80,000 differential, that's why we actually can achieve a slightly improved rate structure in '25 because last year, the rate was .4267. This year, the rate is .4268. So, at that point in time, now we know what the new rate structure is. We can take that new rate for the general fund. We can apply it against the assessed valuation for the current year, which we know is $351,685, or $972, times the new rate structure. And so, we know the potential gross revenue that will be assessed for this year that will cash flow in '25 is $1,500,996. Then the county will basically perform the collection for this on our behalf. So, they charge, Green County charges 3%, Christian County charges 4%. You back out the processing fees to the county, and our net expected revenue for this year's assessed valuation, which will cash flow in '25, for the general fund is $1,455,782. Clear as mud?
Bob, I just admire how well you can go through that and actually understand what you're saying.
Well, at least you think I know what I'm talking about.
I know you do because you, you're just, your mind works that way.
But we do the same thing for the parks fund, and we do the same thing, the same analysis exactly for the streets fund, just the rate structures are a little smaller. So, at the end of the day, after going through that process for all three funds, we'll end up with a consolidated 2024 tax levy of .6075 compared to last year's of .60, .74. There really is no change in the parks and rec structure. There is no change in the streets, streetlight assessed, or the, the tax levy. So, in total, we can take those new rate structures, apply it against the assessed valuation that we have for this year, and if you do that, then you can see at the bottom of the page that the total tax revenue expected by the type of tax levy, back to this gross number of $1,500,996 for the general fund, Parks and Rec 404, $439, and for streets, $231,058, to a gross total of a little over $2.1 million. Back out the county processing fee, and we come up with a forecasted net 2024 tax levy or tax receipt to cash flow next year of $2,072,136. Questions? We obviously are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
You're welcome.
Did we have any questions from council? Checking with the citizens, do we have any citizens here this evening to speak on this agenda item? Seeing that there are none, this is a first read, so please remember to get with staff if you have any additional questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 12, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-51 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving budget amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Mr. Ford's back.
Thank you, Bob Ford. I think I'm still the finance director.
Yeah.
Doing good so far.
Yeah, so far. So, you'll recall, as we talked about the budget this last year, we break our budget starting with, really starting with last year's budget process, but definitely in '24, we break our budget into a operating component and a capital component. So, we're going to walk through those changes that have occurred over the first six or seven months of the year, and what that means for the remaining part of the year, and what the budget would look like on an amended basis for 2024. So, in a nutshell, the, the net cash, the net surplus or deficit of the consolidated results of all the funds of the city, net-net, is slightly better than what we told you in the budget that we presented and was approved back in December of this last year. From an operating perspective, we have a $997,000 increase in the operating surplus. So, think about revenues minus expenses, budget versus what we're currently forecasting. We're better off by almost a million dollars today than we were when we presented the budget of this last year. Revenues are up $725,000 on a consolidated basis, and there are really two drivers to what's driving the revenue increase. The first thing is an improvement in interest, income or interest revenue by $376,000. So, you'll recall, last year, we talked a bit about this, that we have a fairly large cash balance that, and the primary use of those funds are for two major projects, for the wastewater project and for the parks and rec project. So, those, those cash amounts, specifically the wastewater projects, are getting spent slightly slower than we expected in our budget analysis. So, we have the cash longer, so we can earn interest income longer. And we've also, we've looked at the cash flow requirements of all of our funds, and where we can, we, we've taken some of that money and we've, we put it either into a six-month CD or a seven-month CD. In one case, we put it into a 14-month CD, and by doing that, we've increased the rate of return on our funds as opposed to leaving it in our bank account and earning 325 basis points. For instance, the 14-month CD earns about 5.4%. The seven-month CD earned about five and a quarter. So, if you look at all those blended rates that we've improved by placing those monies based on when we need the cash, by placing those monies opportunistically in, in CDs, we've been able to increase the overall rate of return on, as far as interest income goes for the city. So, there's $376,000 of the improvement. We have a $350,000 improvement related to, primarily to the rush. The rush has had a significant improvement versus budget on the admission side as well as concession sales. So, and we'll look at a schedule here in a minute where you can see the exact numbers, but in total, about $350,000 of incremental revenue is coming in related to the rush activity. Additionally, expenses are down $272,000. So, there's, there's kind of good news and bad news here. The good news is, from a personnel cost perspective, we're showing a savings of about $711,000 for the year, and this is primarily due to jobs that were budgeted for that have, that have not been filled yet. And specifically, some of the big buckets is tied to the fire department. There were three battalion chiefs that were budgeted for the year and budgeted for the entire year that won't be hired this year. So, as a result, we've got a significant savings with regards to personnel costs, so not only salaries, but benefits that are related to those jobs, and those, that savings... And those, that savings is about half of that $711,000 of consolidated savings is tied to the fire department. The bad news part of that is our expenses are up $440,000. So if you net the two, that's where you get that total expenses are down. And $440,000, and most of that is tied to the rush. So as revenues have gone up, so have expenses. But as a result, expenses have not gone up as much as revenues have gone up. And as a result, we get an improved margin, and we'll talk about what that looks like in a minute, but we've got an improved margin for the rush, which adds to the bottom line of the operating results of the city. So net-net on an operating basis, we are almost $1 million better off. $746,000 decrease in the capital surplus of the city. And that's really driven by two factors. One, capital expenditure, so the use of the cash or the use of net operating results, that's down $2.9 million. And that's down $2.9 million and it's driven primarily by two major projects. One, the elimination of the highway MM expansion project. And that is, so there's, we have budgeted to spend $1.1 million, so that's not going to get spent now. So we see a reduction in CapEx. In addition, $1.5 million of the Schuler Creek Trail expenditures are not going to get spent this year. It's not that they're not going to get spent, they're just, they're going to get spent next year. So we've pushed that into '25, it'll be captured in a '25 budget. But as a result, we've got $2.9 million of expenditures that we had budgeted for that are not going to happen. And as a result, as you recall from our discussions last year, a lot of our capital projects are funded by cash that's currently sitting on our balance sheet. We've already got the money. So it's not like we're looking for a revenue source to pay for that because it's, the wastewater project is a great example. We may spend $40 million this year, but we have $40 million of cash sitting on the balance sheet to pay for it. The same thing applies here. And so from a modeling perspective, where we used cash off the balance sheet for maybe these two large projects, we just put it back on the balance sheet to earn interest income, which improves our operating income number from a revenue perspective. And what we've also done as part of this analysis is that we've got $1 million of surplus coming out of the operating side, the operating budget. So instead of utilizing cash off the balance sheet to fund those projects, what we've done is we've assumed that we're going to use that net operating surplus to offset the CapEx. So we've actually reduced the sources by 3.6 million even though the actual expenditures are only going down by 2.9. Let me, let me show it to you in numbers and that should make maybe a little more sense. So on the left-hand side is what the changes in, changes in the operating budget. And this walks you through 375,585 interest income improvement. You see the rush admissions, rush concessions, rush rentals, et cetera. So total revenue changes are up $725,000 for the year. The same on the expense side. See the improvement on the, on the personnel cost side. We've got $711,000, $711,505 improvement in personnel costs. Here's where we talk about the rush incremental expenses related to generating the kind of revenues we're seeing at the rush. But if you take the rush revenue, the incremental revenue, less the incremental expenses, the rush margin went up by $175,000. So we've got an overall operating improvement happening in the parks department today. Additionally, on the operating side, these are just changes that we see in the operating results going forward. We've got some miscellaneous things here. We've got an upgrade in our Microsoft licenses, $20,000 incremental expense that we didn't budget for that we're now adding to the budget. Laserfish document storage, this is, this is a storage mechanism that will allow the city and really Laura, a lot of the documents that she currently has, paper documents, will store all of this on the cloud so that we can easily access it and we can also get rid of the paper. The biggest driver here, I would say, is the data analytics department. So you recall from our workshop, maybe a month and a half or two months ago, where Josh came and talked to you about data analytics and what the power of that tool. We are establishing a data analytics department as part of the general fund. And embedded in our personnel impact number is our personnel cost of $59,000. So of that improvement of 711, there is an additional $60,000 of salaries and benefits for the new department that we're calling the data analytics department, that, that plus their operating expenses of $128,000. So we end up with about $175,000 of incremental cost to set up the new data analytics group as part of the general fund. So we're doing that significant effort and as a result, on a consolidated basis, the city is still $251,000 better off for the year in terms of a forecast. On the operating side, you can see that revenue minus expenses gets us down to the 997, 207 number that we talked about on the prior page. The same thing is going on on the capital side. And if you think about capital uses, which are expenditures and capital sources, which are sources of cash either coming from the operating results or coming from our cash balance sheet, coming from the balance sheet. As a result, here's where we see our capital deficit of 746. But you take the 746 deficit on the capital side plus 997 positive on the operating side, add them together on a net basis, we're up $251,000 for the year in this new budget This one's a little harder to read. It's also in your staff report, but it takes those incremental changes and it applies them to the natural accounts, so the revenue buckets they belong in. Starts with the budget, shows the change, and then gives you what the resulting amended budget item is going to look like. So just, once again, here's an example. We're not, we're not changing our assumption set around city sales taxes. As you've seen from our flash report that comes out monthly, our sales tax numbers are pretty much on budget. So we don't see anything on the horizon that would say either raise or lower that assumption set. Same on property tax. So once again, the only two things that are driving the revenue side, interest income and the impacts of the rush. And once again, we've shown where the budget started, the changes, and how the budget ends up on an amended basis. Same thing on the capital side, we're doing the same thing. So net-net, you can see at the bottom line, on a net surplus basis, we started with a budget of $2.8 million in the black on a consolidated basis, operating and capital netted together. Now we're going to improve that consolidated net number by $251,000. And now we're going to be, now we're forecasting to end the year at slightly over $3 million. Then I take that, that data and I say, how does that data impact fund by fund by fund? And the next chart takes you through and shows you what's happening to the admin side, data analytics courts, animal control, parks and rec, public safety. This shows you all of the components, all of our fund components, and it starts with our budgeted net surplus number. It shows the changes and then it shows you at the end of the day what the amended net number looks like by fund, which also ties back to a consolidated number of a little over $3 million for the year. Questions?
Bob, sorry, I don't have a question. Could you go, can we go back to the last slide?
Yep.
Because there's a point I want to show on that slide that all the data looks great, but after the questions, I want to point out one thing on the enterprise fund before we move past this discussion, just because it's available to me and I wasn't planning on it. Any questions?
Questions?
Questions from council?
The only thing that I'd like to point out that we will have to address, and I know it's the topic that you all get tired, I mean, I have, it's one of those things I absolutely cannot stand having to address in every budget, is the enterprise funds because we had to address the sewer budget from the 2011 compliance order. But having an enterprise fund, as you see, that started off the budget at $90,000 in the hole on the water side, has had to be offset by the sewer, so which means the rates have never been adjusted since 2011 to accommodate, to correct the wastewater side. So in 2025, the budget will reflect a correction that we will have to go into the rates of the water to make that adjustment where it's been in the negative. And just seeing that on the screen, you can see where even that deficit, that the general fund and other departments are subsidizing the losses in the water, and that's an enterprise fund that can't happen. So that's just something that we're going to have to, we've discussed at this, at this dais before, that that's an issue that we're going to have to continue to work on and address. But that is a deficiency that we'll need to address in the 2025 budget. But I just noted it on that slide and I wasn't planning on it, but it's always a pet peeve when I see it pop up. It's, the financials look great, except I'm only finding that one number that we're talking about. I have no questions.
Anyone else? Obviously, once again, we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. One last chance for questions from council. Seeing there are none, please remember this is a first read, so please get with staff if you have any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 13, I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-32, please.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Chief Compton here to give us an overview this evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm not sick and I don't have coke, so draw on your chair. Just not hitting on all cylinders. David told me it'd be better in five days, so kind of may have broke the microphone.
Okay. This project started about two years ago. We started looking for a replacement truck for the 1991 model ladder truck that we currently have in service. Over this time, we have had several different vendors come through town with different trucks taking over. Figuring out what we might be best and what we don't like. And we have kind of, based upon my staff's recommendation, landed on a mid-mount aerial truck. So when you look at aerial trucks, aerial truck is where the turntable is mounted at the back of the truck and mid-mount is where it's mounted in the center. With the mid-mount, you get a lower center of gravity and a little bit better rescue capabilities for if we need to get down into a trench or something to rescue somebody out, we have a lot lower to the ground capabilities. And these trucks have a negative working range of around 12% to 13%. We've gone through several of these trucks. Like I said, we even had a tiller truck come into town that didn't fit any of our needs. And we kind of landed on a Rosenbauer truck after we went through all of these different vendors. This truck will be purchased through a cooperative purchase contract through HGAC Buy. The city has used cooperative purchases, most recently for a new back truck for built and a street sweep that is coming in the next few months. It's still on track. So we've used this purchase process versus a sealed bid. The good thing about using this process is we can see the prices, how things are listed out. And if we get into this and we've got to switch some things around, when you have a sealed bid, this is what you have to do where we have some flexibility in this. This is a Rosenbauer truck. This, we have three Rosenbauer trucks in our fleet now. We've had very good luck with them. They're just as good as any of the others. This truck has a delivery timeline of late 2026 or spring of 2027. By moving forward now, there are some EPA changes coming in the near future that will affect the price of the truck roughly $50,000. And those EPA changes are changes in the emission standards in the motor. And they're basically changing from the 12-volt operating system that we're currently accustomed to to back to a 24-volt operating system. And we would prefer not to buy the first one of those that was made. Funding for this truck comes through the fire sales tax. It was passed in 2013. When we had that information to come out for that tax, we listed all the equipment that we were going to replace. This was listed in that laundry list of stuff that we wanted to do. Fire sales tax account roughly has $900,000 in it today because we're looking at extended delivery time. We will have, should have plenty of money to cover that when it rises. Taxes generating right at a half million dollars a year, maybe a little over. Plus Bob has tied up a lot of that money in the CDs, making good money on our interest rate, so that helps a lot. Price of this truck is $1,855,000. There's a 2% contingency fund built into that. If we don't use those contingency funds for any kind of minor change orders, that roughly $36,000, $37,000 will be rebated at the end of the program. So that's the worst-case scenario with that price. Questions?
I've got a question, chief. So 2026, 2027 as a delivery date, is this something that we pay for as a full chunk right up front and we don't have to worry? So...
So there is, to be clear, we can do that. There is a discount for doing that, but while we're making an interest, bank on our money, it's not worth doing that.
Gotcha.
If we paid for that upfront, it's about a wash on the interest. Where we're going to lose is we would need to pick up some sort of bond insurance policy to ensure that the vendor doesn't take our money and run off. So if taxpayers, if for some reason they were going to go out of business, which is unlikely, and they had our cash in an account, we could get our money back. So we would actually be, Bob's that kind of figured out, Jake figured it out, we'd almost be losing money by taking that cash upfront discount.
Gotcha.
So we're just paying full, thirty days' debt.
Perfect. Is there an increased risk of the cost of this going up significantly?
Once Mr. Cameron signs the purchase order.
Then we're locked in that price. Perfect. Thank you. Any additional questions from council?
You said something about the EPA thing. Can you go over that again?
So they have determined that when, the current EPA standards that are out there for diesel engines, when a diesel engine starts, there is a momentarily puff of smoke that comes out of the exhaust. It lasts maybe for less than 15 seconds. And they are going to stop that initial puff of smoke and they're going to capture it. By doing that, they have changed the emission standards starting in 2027. Now, the way I understand it, if we don't get the truck to 2027, that's fine. They've already got the motor placed in the chassis and we're past like 50% of the build and it's not a big deal. We're going to change those over where they go to a different 24-volt operating system where the F fluid, diesel exhaust fluid, is heated all the time to capture those particles that are pushed out of the exhaust.
And you say the truck that you're, we're wanting to get is going to not...
We're on the old standard.
Okay.
My dad told me you never want to buy a version of one of them.
So my question is, will the EPA come around and tell you, we need to put this on the truck later?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do that.
Thank you. They have.
They could.
They could. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Would it be wise to get it up on there now or wait and later and do it later? So...
No, we should grandfather it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Pack?
Only equipment on the current ladder truck will switch over to this one?
Yes and no. There's some things on the current ladder truck that just need to go away with that truck. We're going to purchase some loose hand tools and stuff like that, brackets them out to install. We will probably purchase a lot of that on the front end of this deal because if I pay for it now and we get that equipment, it's warehousing, it will save you money because we're talking about a 10% price increase by 2026. So we may move forward with buying that now. But hose, nozzles, air packs, stuff like that will transfer over the ladders that are in the tunnel in the back of the truck. Those need to go away, the 91 model stuff. We can re-buy it.
Do you know what kind of price range we're looking at that additional cost?
It's in this contract, so it's all included. And the other truck, it doesn't really have any value to a fire department. It's probably the old Detroit motor that's in there, probably is a dump truck driver's dream. driver's dream. But it has no, because of the age, it'll be 30. If it stays running, it'll be 35 years old in the house service and stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief, is your current rear mount, is it a Rosenbauer?
Yes.
Is our other truck a center or is it a rear mount?
It's a rear mount.
It's a rear.
Yeah.
So we would have one.
Most departments that have two aerials run a mid-mount and a rear mount because you're pretty much covered. And the thing about the platform is, when you go to do a rescue, to open the gate or the door and somebody stepped into it, it's so much simpler than trying to get somebody down that ladder. So this truck has a heavier tip weight of 1,000 pounds, which will easily hold three people versus a straight stick ladder usually has a tip weight of 500 pounds. So two people max, depending on size, but it is difficult to get a person down that ladder. And that's why staff wanted to go with this. It's just a lot safer working department.
True. Thank you, chief. Any questions from council? Seeing that there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 14, 24-r-33. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-r-33, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. And we have Mr. Felig here this evening to give us an overview.
So the city requested bids for full-depth asphalt and concrete work for the Stone Creek Leg Road Extension Project, Stone Creek Boss Development. The invitation for bid included a base and additive bid. The base bid included construction of full-depth asphalt and with concrete curb and gutter. The additive bid included concrete work for ADA compliant concrete sidewalks and ramps running parallel to the road extension. The city received two bids from local contractors. APAC Central was the lowest bid at a total of about $220,000. The base bid came out to $189,651. And additive bid came out to about $29,400. The road extension will be paid for out of the street budget and.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Have we, have we used this group before?
Yes, they have done a lot of work in the city.
Oh, did they do a good job?
Yep, they're a really good company, paving company.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing that there are none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing I'll bring up about this road extension, I didn't want to say it with Angel's work. The community will see the street done, but the road will be closed until all the construction to the school is complete. And the reason why is we had a better opportunity to get the street completed. Normally, you would leave that thing a little bit open and then put the asphalt down at a later date, but by getting the price now. So there will be a completed street that will actually be blocked off from actual public use until the school is open, because the construction equipment will be going through there to build the school. So we don't want to tear up the new street and doing that. So if people are like, well, why'd you spend the money to pay the street? We could get it done cheaper now than waiting. And so I appreciate the work of the staff. Bob, you'll never take credit for it. I know you won't. But you did a fantastic job of explaining the tax levy in a way that, I mean, I know that it would take me an hour to go back and break it down in the formula and then figure out how you actually come up with that. But I thought you did a fantastic job. But I think the thing that gets overlooked, that I think it just kind of gets maybe a little bit glazed over, and I've noticed it in the last two times even myself, is for the staff involved and for everyone, a lot of the money that's sitting in those accounts that's built, there's, there's a number of things that have to happen. And one is, this council allowed us the opportunity to create provisions that would allow our finance director to move money on our behalf into different accounts without having to come back here every single time to get permission. So when the markets are available to him and he finds opportunities, he can come to me. It used to require five signatures. There's still a measure of accountability. So you allowed us to do that. What he's not saying is how many times he's found ways to come in. He says, I found a way to get an extra 300 basis points here or 150 basis points there. And he's got it all lined out. So for our financial position to be at a place that has built additional cash to make these budget amendments to be there and have flat sales taxes, a lot of that is driven by someone that is looking out for the community's best interest to maximize every dollar. And so, chief, to your point by buying the truck, and I appreciated your work on the truck. And to get to these points, our staff have done a lot of great things to cut their expenses. I know you haven't hired positions. There's places we haven't filled it. So there are people that have sacrificed to create these between interests, not having the positions, but also finding these ways to save $50,000 here, $10,000 there. We're not trying to go out and spend it to create the BDMI team, but we got to find ways that we can make data decisions better. We're utilizing those savings to put them back into better uses to be more efficient and effective for the city. And I think that in a matter of 15 to 20 minutes tonight, Mr. Ford went through that list, and it's hard to capture it in that one setting. But I want to commend all the staff and Bob, your ability just to present that information, but also the ability to invest our money and say thank you. So watch out for the, the Shiller Creek Trail Project is out to bid right now. I want to thank Karen and her team for getting that project done. She's tired of me asking when it's going out to bid. And I think there was one last opportunity that I almost messed it up. And she says, no, David, we're not doing one more thing because it'll just delay it. And I said, you're in control, Karen, so you have it. But it is out to bid and looking forward to seeing that work done. In your, in your admin report on, on page four, I want to thank the staff for all the overlays throughout the community. In the 2020 ballot measure, one of the things that we, we promised to the community was that part of those funds was because we've taken motor fuel sales tax and moved it into the PD years ago, that that would be moved back. And that's how we're actually paving for a lot of the work. I appreciate the staff that have gone out there for Blevins Asphalt, who was the contractor on that job, for just the work that's getting done and seeing those improvements actually being made and getting out there and just seeing some better streets. I appreciate the feedback that we're receiving from the community. But also inside this report, why, I just want to brag on the staff tonight, but, you know, we received a call. We've moved all the facilities. For those that don't know, we've moved all the admin, legal, not the legal, but the finance, HR, the clerk's office have been moved to the builds office just from the states. This staff has grown since 2016 by almost 77% across the city. Space has not grown. And basically, they've been moved into the builds building to better facilitate the communication. And so before we had people in three or four different buildings communicating the same need via email or phone. And I think it was last Friday, chief sales helped me remember, but I took an email from a resident regarding a crosswalk at Lynn and Ritter. It's in your admin report. The community can read this report. It's online for you. Very cordial, saying, hey, listen, we've got a crosswalk problem. The rush has got additional folks that are going there. My kids are having to wait. Cars are not stopping. And for one of those that live out on Boston Lane and 174, the flashing yellow light doesn't mean anything to a car. And so before, within, I took that email at 4:10, and by 4:45, she had no less than three responses from our team. And some of that was because the ability for Karen to walk down the hall, Angel's two doors down from me now, to talk to engineering, talk to community development, and also be on the phone with public safety. It's not ideal to be all crammed into one building, and I apologize. But I can tell you, we can better serve the community by communicating quicker and faster. So I commend all the staff that have had to move around, but for all the vision of people that have worked to make that happen, but also to watch our staff. Chief Sales responded, I love our team. I agree. I love the way we responded to that, to that request. And I just wanted to give a shout out for that, for that, for that work. We're getting ready, prepared. I know it's only August and we're into budget discussions. We're in the budget amendment, but they're also working on the budget. But we are preparing for the next legislative session. And there's several things that I will be asking you for. If there's any specific priorities, obviously, Senate Bill 979. There is a meeting scheduled, I believe, for next week already in Springfield where we're going to come together around what legislative priorities need to be for the region. This will be brought up again. But that's not the only thing that we need to continue to work on. So we will be continuing our efforts to secure additional funding to help offset the wastewater treatment plant again. But I would just be prepared for us to have discussions about the legislative priorities at this city or any that you may have that you would like to see the local government take care of. Real quickly, the MM project from MM Farm Road 160, which is just south of the Amazon campus, they'll be rerouting and have the bridge overpass, which was originally scheduled to go out to bid in October, has been moved to May. That's not because of any delay by the city. That's because they found unsuitable soil on the property and they got to build the bridge piers for the overpass a little bit more. It's typical construction needs, but at the same time, it will go out to bid in May. It has not changed much of anything for us with the opening of the school, especially with the Stone Creek Leg. It's been a long time since we've all been in this room, so I apologize for the long report. But we'll see you all again next Tuesday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Moving on to reports from council. Any reports from council?
Thursday, I'll be going to Mercy for back surgery, so I'll be missing a meeting or two.
Prettens for you for a quick recovery.
Let everybody know.
Thank you, Gary. Any other reports from council?
I just was approved for the Green County Restaurant Board Committee, so I'll be starting with them soon.
Excellent. Anything else from council? So moving on, reports from the mayor. Very appreciative. Thank you for the informational workshop that we had last week. That was a lot of information. And so very thankful for having that and working on, to educate us here on council, giving us all of that information. I wanted to relay some appreciation from the constituents on these road overlay projects. I know that's been a long process getting there. And so I have heard a lot. Of course, everyone wants their road overlaid, but for the people that are getting, we are getting to, there is a great deal of appreciation for that. And I also had kind of a question and compliment both. We've got the sidewalk on 174 that goes underneath the railroad tracks. Was that us or was that MoDoc that?
We'll take credit for it.
Well, excellent work.
No, it was not us.
So yeah, longstanding problem that I know I've discussed that with a lot of different people. I've actually got to see people walking on that now. Such a safety improvement in our community, in my opinion. So I'm very thankful for that. That's all I had for this evening. Executive session this evening, so no further action other than the announcing that adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or allowed per RSMO 610.021. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under RSMO 610.021.2, real estate acquisition, closed session, closed vote, closed record. RSMO 610.021.12, documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. And RSMO 610.021.13, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants or employment. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We'll now have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hardin?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Motion carries 800.